Okay, well then. I hereby call this meeting to order. We are assembled here tonight for the City of Oxford Board of Commissioners Special Meeting and Public Hearing. Today is Monday, March 29, 2021, and it is 5:30 PM. And actually, it says Commissioners Boardroom, City Hall, but we are zooming in yet again. So first, I will do the roll call, and I will start with Mayor Protem.
President.
Okay, Commissioner Bridges.
President.
Commissioner Fields.
President.
Commissioner Gilreath.
President.
Commissioner Tovey.
President.
Commissioner Bullock.
President.
And Commissioner Curran.
Here you go, President.
Okay, excellent. Everybody's here. Good to see you tonight. And with that, I will open the public hearing. And the public hearing is to receive public input on the proposed use of a finance contract with BB&amp;T Bank at 2.14% interest for installment financing of a street resurfacing initiative of city-maintained streets. And please note that the vote will not take place tonight, as is the usual with Zoom meeting public hearings, and it will take place next week during the City of Oxford Agenda Meeting on April 5, 2021. And with that, I declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone present on the call that would like to speak about this issue? Okay, there is nobody present on the call. I'm going to ask again, just in case I see one phone number, but it does look like a City of Oxford phone number. Okay, we have, and I also have a question for the clerk. We have a letter that was emailed to the board and the manager and myself this afternoon from Thomas and Julia Blaine. They are not here to present their letter, but they do want it included in, as part of the public hearing. And Ms. Bowen, I have a question for you, because if somebody, because there's a 24-hour wait period, if somebody had come tomorrow and sent you commentary as part of the public hearing, because they were not able to make this meeting tonight or didn't have computer access, in order for it to be included, would I be required to read it before the vote in order for it to be included as part of the public hearing minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so with that, I am going to read the comments from Thomas and Julia Blaine, so that they might be included as part of the public hearing. "March 29, 2021, downtown is the physical, civic, and economic core of Oxford. Its value far outweighs the cost to maintain it. Downtown Oxford was designed as a walkable space by its founders, but has not been maintained as one. There is significant room for improvement. Oxford has the opportunity to invest in its commercial core by planning and executing elements of its downtown master plan adopted by the Board of Commissioners in 2016 in conjunction with the North Carolina Department of Transportation's resurfacing initiative set to begin this summer. By focusing on widening and improving the sidewalks, improving safety of the crosswalks, and narrowing the streets to reduce vehicle speed, the City of Oxford would be investing in the continued viability of the small business community, which constitutes the core of the downtown district. The streets downtown have been repurposed to move cars through town, not people between places of business. These state-maintained roadways impede commerce and the movement of people between shops and parts of town. The wide boulevards with travel lanes wider than those found on an interstate encourage drivers to move at excessive speeds that cannot be controlled just through enforcement. Free-flowing turn lanes, crosswalks with poor visibility, and lack of crosswalks in key locations all increase the difficulty of crossing a street in downtown and decrease the time people spend downtown. Our unshaved sidewalks, which are cracked, broken, and patched in various manners, are unwelcoming, unsafe, and encourage visitors to retreat to their cars as quickly as possible. Having a space where people feel safe, comfortable, and welcome is essential for a local business to succeed, and that begins outside the store and the public space. In 2016, Oxford adopted a vision and outline of what it hoped to achieve in its downtown core. Community members realized downtown's importance then, just as community members now still do. The town has embarked on a large-scale infrastructure improvement project to correct a century of neglect on its water and sewer services. At the same time, the town is partnering with the North Carolina Department of Transportation to resurface many roadways in the Oxford community, as well as install a roundabout at the intersection of Main and Spring Streets. These improvements are much-needed, must-do projects, but the town continues to ignore the needs of pedestrians and businesses in the downtown core. Two roads, Main and Williamsboro, are due to be resurfaced while the crosswalks, sidewalks, and curbs are in tatters, neglecting the backbone of commerce in downtown Oxford. People, the roundabout resolves how to move cars safely through a busy intersection, again from the perspective of moving cars through downtown with the greatest of speed and efficiency. There is no better time for us to work to improve the core of the Oxford community, Oxford community. Oxford has a major road project coming. NCDOT is adopting policies that require consideration for all uses of streets, and interest rates are at unheard-of levels, making funding for projects cheaper than they have ever been. These financing rates, along with the timing of these impending projects, makes taking a stance on investing in our downtown so important. If we miss this opportunity now, how will we recognize a better one in the future? If now is not the time, when is? We hope our commissioners recognize this as an opportunity and do not commit an unforced error by letting it just pass on through." Julia and Thomas Blaine, strong arm, baking.
Mayor, what does that have to do with our public hearing?
I'm, I, I-
I mean, we're, we're here to talk about finance contract with BB&amp;T for financing for our street resurfacing.
I-
Nothing to do with sidewalks. So why, why, what does that got to do with?
I don't know. I had, this appeared in my box, the same as yours, and they requested it as part of the cut public hearing tonight, so I read it. I'm not disputing-
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. We've heard it.
There you go.
Got nothing to do with.
Does anybody have any, is there anybody online that would make any, like to make any other comments about the, the proposed finance contract with BB&amp;T Bank at 2.14% interest? Okay, with that then, I declare the public hearing closed, and we will vote on this next week at our agenda meeting. Ms. Bowen, does, because of the delay, if anybody else had anything else to comment on this item, would we be allowed to accept those comments until our vote on April 5?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's the reason for the delay?
Right.
So that people have a chance to get comments in.
Okay.
Ms. Bowen, how did you determine if a comment is pertinent to what we're, what the public hearing was about?
We don't, just like in, anytime it stands up in a board meeting, you never know what they're going to say and whether it's pertinent or not.
Okay.
They have a right to speak, even if, if, we don't think what they're saying is relevant.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Bowen. So technically, do I need to keep the public hearing open until April 5, or, or just declare it closed for right now, but state that we're accepting comments? If, okay, there we go.
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. Item B, consider adopting the necessary resolution declaring intent to reimburse the Local Government Commission installment purchase resolution, the Local Government Commission installment purchase contract, NCDOT resurfacing municipal agreement, and BB&amp;T resolution approving financing terms. A public hearing is necessary to-
Yeah, we'll, we'll do all this Monday.
That, I'm sorry.
All this can be done Monday.
My brain turned off. I apologize. Please forgive me. I didn't expect to see that there. I apologize. Going on to city business, item A, consider adopting a resolution of support for Carlake Regional Water System water treatment plant renovation and expansion project. United States Congress via the Community Project Funding Program has the potential to provide the Carlake Regional Water System with the funding necessary to fill the gap needed to commence and complete the long-awaited water treatment plant renovation and expansion project. A supporting resolution of the project is needed and necessary to strengthen consideration of an application for funding through this congressional funding program. And you have that resolution in Attachment A with this agenda, and the city manager sent out one at 8:59 this morning with a correction to the, the gallons that will be, the gallons per day, that would be the result of completing the expansion project. So you should have that information. I have an additional, so I have an, we have an additional one that we would like for you to consider as well, which has additional information. And the reason for that, and I'm going to read that to you, the reason for that is to get our, Congressman Price has a deadline of Friday, to get our application to his office in order for it to be considered in the projects that he decides to support. Our water system partners, the City of Henderson and Warren County, will be doing the same process with Congressman Butterfield. His deadline is not until the 18th. And in the event that our staff is not able to get everything to Congressman Price, and instead, we use Congressman Butterfield's opportunity, we are suggesting an enhanced resolution that has more information about all of the work that the partnership has done over the years, because you can put so much information in a very short resolution, so that Congressman Price would have that at his fingertips to consult and be able to support Congressman Butterfield. So, if you have the resolution in front of you that the city manager already sent out, after the paragraph that says, ends with the Carlake Regional Water Treatment Plant by doubling the capacity to 20 million gallons per day, we would insert, whereas, as early as 2014, the City of Oxford and its partners in the Carlake Regional Water System sought and acquired permission to expand its inter-basin water transfer rights, and whereas, in 2017, the Carlake Regional Water System Partners completed a request for qualifications and selection process to contract with a consulting engineering firm to assist the regional water system with its systems update and potential expansion plan. And whereas, since 2018, the Carlake Regional Water System Partners have been working to acquire funding for both rehabilitation and expansion of the water system plant, being awarded, and this is where we want to get the precise amount of grants, in, so we got to complete that number, how much we received in grant funds, and the precise amount of zero or very low-interest loans. And, and then we would say from where, so Division of Water Infrastructure, whoever provided the funding. So we need to complete those details. And whereas, in 2018, the Carlake Regional Water System began work on financial planning and rate analyses to update the partner cost-sharing agreement in preparation for both phases of work on the water treatment plant, including individual rate study completed by the City of Oxford in 2016 to accommodate its 10-year capital improvement plan. And whereas, due to the time lapse, since preliminary estimates were obtained, as well as the increase of material costs as impacted by the COVID-19 shutdowns, currently acquired funding is no longer sufficient to meet all the expected costs. And while plans are being adjusted to allow for the project to begin, there is still a shortfall of X dollars. We still need to insert that. And then it goes right back into the rest of the resolution that the manager sent out, whereas the Carlake Regional Water System Treatment Plant also provides water to the County of Franklin and the Town of Stovall, and so on. And so what the manager and I propose is that this board considers approving both, the completed short version, which would be submitted with everybody, but especially to Congressman Price, if we are able to do a complete application that would have all of that information that we just added into the resolution. But if this staff cannot get that application done, we have a longer approved resolution, which shows the history of work, starting in 2014 with the inter-basin water transfer, and proceeding through the capital improvement plans, the rate studies, the amount of money required, acquired, and including the amount of shortfall, so that Congressman Price can see the entire merit of our proposal in essentially a one-and-a-half-page document. And I know that was a lot, but does the board have any questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Because I listened to all of that, and Alan, maybe this was for you to answer. You know, the whole, the project was separated between the rehab of the existing equipment and then the expansion as a second part. Does this address at both ends of that, or where do we stand on that?
Well, it could potentially address both ends of that. This program that we are hearing about is harkening back to the days of congressional earmark funding, basically is what it is. We just watched a webinar from Congressman Price's office last Thursday at 10 o'clock, and, you know, they're kind of expecting us to give them this long application and turn it in by Friday, which of course Friday's a holiday as well, so you know, you effectively have four business days to get it done. But anyway, it's kind of open-ended. They are looking to, they being each congressman, as I understand it, looking to support potentially 10 projects within their congressional district of varying types. I think there are five different categories potentially that they are looking to fund. They are looking to fund as many projects as they can. One of the good things about this project, when I was watching the webinar, and I thought of the Carlake Regional Water System project, is that if you actually read the information and start drilling down into what's available for this congressional projects funding initiative, the project is one of those that has to be shovel-ready, and this is really about the only one that we have. And it also kind of checks the boxes, so to speak, of being, they're looking to help with funding gaps, which is what we currently have in Carlake. We have a gap that we're looking for to try to fill, to move the project forward. And it's, it's really, the more you think about it, and the more conversation that we have had, we being the mayor and I, with Congressman Price, and the conversations that I've been having with Warren County and Henderson, and the conversations they in turn are having with Congressman Butterfield, it, it checks the boxes for what they are looking for. The amount is kind of yet to be determined. That's going to be one of the keys in all of this, is how much to really apply for, and we're looking for guidance from the congressman's office to tell us that. You know as well as I do, and sitting in on the last advisory board meeting a week ago, or whatever it was, that we have approximately $8 to $10 million in that gap, depending on where it's going to come from, that we need to, to find to move this project forward. Whether or not the congressman will support that amount is yet to be, the question to be determined, because I do not know specifically what amount each congressional district is going to have to divvy up. So they may wanting to spread the wealth, so to speak, if there's a specific amount. If each congressional district is given like $50 million, you know, to, to divvy up amongst their district and try to get projects moving, they've got to decide which of the 10 float to the surface, so to speak. The webinar that we were on with Congressman Price, we are now in the fourth district, where we used to be in the first congressional district, which was Congressman Butterfield. Congressman Price's district, and please correct me if I misstate here, you know, covers Durham, Orange, Chatham, you know, Alamance County, so it's a pretty big area of population and other municipalities and large governments that are going to be vying for these projects. And, you know, I think the project that we have checks all their boxes, is what they are looking for. But what we need to be doing now is really figuring out how to fine-tune it, so to speak, to really get it into that pipeline of what they're looking for and that they can support. So could I tell you how much exactly that we need to be putting in that box to apply for or request at this point in time? No, that's something that we're going to be working on over the next potentially few days, to figure that out with their staff, so that we can have our project hopefully rise to the top. I mean, it's, it's not a guarantee, but I look at it this way, it's an opportunity. And any opportunity for funding like this, when we're looking for, you know, millions of dollars, and this represents an opportunity to pick up a few more million dollars for the funding gap that we need, is worth pursuing.
And, and one of the things that, thank you, Alan, for that great explanation. One of the things that Congressman's staff said when I asked about the fact that two of our partners are in Congressman Butterfield's district, and, and we are in Congressman Price's, and should everybody apply, the response was that Congressman Butterfield's office and Price's office will get together and discuss, provided, of course, that this project has merit, which we absolutely, and when we told them what it constituted in the chat box, the response was, this is exactly the type of thing we're looking for. But the response was, if it turns out that it's better that Congressman Butterfield put it in his set of 10, that does not prohibit Congressman Price lobbying to support it in Congressman Butterfield's 10. And that's the purpose for adding the additional information to the resolution, because in essence, in one, one and a half pages, he will know, we applied for an inter-basin water transfer in 2014, he will know, we hired a consultant engineering firm in 2016, he will have all of that, including the total amount of funding that we've received and from whom it came for, that we redid our water rates, that the, the partnership redid its rate structure. So all of that information will be there if he doesn't have an application to look at. And so that's why we, we hope you'll consider approving both, even though the numbers, and the numbers aren't going to be anything we make up, we just haven't had a chance to insert them.
Right. And I will also add this, you know, that we may be including Franklin County in this. I'm not sure in which congressional district the entirety of Franklin County is in. If it's divided in congressional districts, I'm not sure. But Franklin is a large customer of the Carlake Regional Water System via the City of Henderson. And my conversations today with the City of Henderson, they, they're revealing some information about their discussions with Franklin County. We may well be seeking a resolution of support from Franklin County to assist in this. And what I'm getting at is that the more you start to think about it, and Oxford serves Stovall, and honestly, we serve Granville County via Carlake Regional Water System, and could potentially get a resolution from Granville County, is that the more multi-jurisdictional, regional that this project becomes, the greater the understanding that the congressmen should have, that, you know, they are supporting through these efforts, an area that is underserved, tier-one counties, you know, all those kinds of things that I really think they're trying to assist with, which is assisting, you know, rural America with some of these essential infrastructure projects. And so I'm, I'm really hopeful that, you know, we can, we can work through all of the congressional ease and stuff that we got to work through in a short period of time to have this kind of rise to the top as the cream. But we're going to do everything that I can do, I promise you that, to see if we can get some funding through this program.
Commissioner Brown-
Yeah, I was wondering, um, you know, I mean, I'm hearing a lot of stuff, but why such a tight timeframe for the application, especially as it relates to Congressman Price? I mean, was this something we should have been working on?
No, no, we, we-
So it seems like a very tight timeframe.
It is.
It is.
I suspect that's because Congressman Price is, because as the city manager pointed out, we are in a very stiff district with heavy competition with Durham and, and Orange County and all, all, he's got a dense district with a lot of heavy hitters. And we, that question was asked on the, the town hall meeting, whatever you want to call it, and the answer was, his staff needs that time to go through all the applications, because they can only put, they can only choose 10. So it is, it is his prerogative to say, so I would imagine, I can't speak for Congressman Butterfield, but I would guess in Congressman Butterfield's district is a little more rural, so there aren't as many projects that are going to rise to the top, like, that are going to check the shovel-ready box, not, another thing they said is you cannot be dependent on this funding alone, because your project won't move forward if we can't fund it. You cannot, you know, and we can't guarantee, and there's a timeline by when the, the project needs to be underway. There are so many contingencies that probably there are going to be less people in Congressman's Butterfield's district. They're gonna, they're not going to have to sift through as many. And, but Congressman Price said that's, that's the deadline. But they did not let us know until earlier last week, and the information session was, as the manager said, on Thursday.
Yeah, all we got was an invitation to join them Thursday at 10 o'clock for this, you know, webinar, and then all of a sudden it's revealed. And the caveat is, you got till April 2nd to get it to us. And oh, by the way, April 2nd's a holiday. So, you know, you can have a shovel-ready project, but it's darn hard to have a shovel-ready application prepared in such a fashion as the way that they want it, because I've taken a look at the application, and, you know, it's something that's going to take a little bit of effort and work. So, you know, we're going to do everything that we can. I, I do think that the avenue, at this point in time, in my opinion, may be best to be pursuing it through Congressman Butterfield. But the phone call that I was awaiting this afternoon was for Henderson to have had that conversation with Congressman Butterfield's office, and for them to say, yes, this, we'll support, this is one of our 10, which gives me a clearer path.
Alan, the $8 million shortfall, you said $8 million shortfall, is that Oxford only, or is that the, the, the group?
That's for, that's for the, the project itself. That's the project itself.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I will put it forth in the form of a motion that we do adopt the resolution as listed and the modified resolution.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Commissioner. I appreciate that so much. Members, colleagues, um, do you have any questions? Any discussion? Okay, well then, Commissioner Fields, if you're there, I'm gonna do the roll call, and forgive me, Mayor Pro Tem, but I'm calling on her first, because she has to-
I'm right here, I'm right here.
What, what say you, Commissioner Fields?
Yay.
Okay, thank you. Yay in your excuse. Okay, Commissioner Fields, Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Gilreath?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
Commissioner Curran?
Yes.
Commissioner Tovey?
Yes.
Excellent. We really appreciate your faith in our, um, and obviously, when we get the details filled in, we'll be sure and send you a final version, so you'll have that for your own use. It is kind of a nice summary of, of some of the work that's gone on for so many years. Um, and so we appreciate that tremendously. And with that, uh, is there any, are there any other comments for the good of the purpose, Commissioner? Are the good of the cause? Commissioner Bridges, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay, um, Commissioner Fields has left. Commissioner Gilreath?
No.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Bullock?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Curran?
Mr. Thorne was a person contacted the day that was supposed to be contacted.
I, I missed half of that, but I'll, I'll be in touch with you right after this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you asked your thing, and Commissioner Tovey?
No.
Okay, and Mayor Pro Tem Harris?
No.
Okay. And so that, that's everything. Anything else, Mr. Manager?
Yes, I do have something real quickly. Um, on the attachment 2B, uh, you saw all of these following attachments that'll be provided with the agenda packet for the agenda meeting. You'll be getting those. I mean, it's a lot of stuff that'll be forthcoming here this week. Um, you've got three different resolutions and the municipal agreement. A lot of stuff from, uh, BBNT, the Local Government Commission, and the NC DOT. Um, when you get that information, if you have any questions, you know, please feel free to give me a call. Uh, we were going to try to get those all taken care of tonight, but with the LGC moving their meeting to May, and the DOT doing, uh, likewise, as far as the letting of the bids for the resurfacing initiative project, moving back into May, um, we, we can do that on Monday. Uh, so we felt that would be better than trying to do it in a special meeting, since we're being given the time to do it, uh, we'll do that. So when you get all that information, if you have a question about it, uh, please feel free to give me a call, but it has all of the details, uh, regarding all of these agreements and resolutions that we are trying to push forward to get this project completed.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Attorney, anything you would like to add? I think you're muted, sir. Um, we need you to unmute. You look like you're speaking. You can't find your unmute. Go to your little square and click the microphone with your cursor. There you go.
No, I, I don't have anything to add.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay, folks, with that, we'll entertain, and we do not need to recess, because we will have a new meeting on Monday when we will consider this item. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
To adjourn.
Okay, we get a motion. That was a double motion. Um, so Cindy, you got that? Was it John and Teresa both? Um, okay, all in favor. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Fields has already left. Commissioner Gilreath?
Yes.
Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
Commissioner Curran?
Yes.
Commissioner Tovey?
Yes.
That is unanimous. Thank you to everybody who, who zoomed in today. Godspeed, enjoy the weather, and don't, hopefully you won't be feeling too many effects of, um, allergies. Take care, everybody. Thank you for your time.